Good evening and welcome to the candidate forum for the candidates running for Cedarburg School District School Board. This forum is being recorded on Zoom on Monday, March 7th at 6:30 PM. The recording will not be edited and will be posted in its entirety on the Cedarburg Library's radio channel, CPL Radio. CPL Radio can be accessed from the library homepage. It is anticipated that it will air Thursday evening at 7 o'clock PM. It will then be made available as a podcast. A link to the recorded forum will also be published on the League of Women Voters Ozaki County's Facebook page and given to the News Graphic and Ozaki News. Please share the recording link with other voters in the Cedarburg School District. Tonight's forum is co-sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Ozaki County and the Cedarburg Public Library. My name is Ellen McFarlane. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Ozaki County. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization and it does not endorse or oppose any candidates or political parties. The Cedarburg Library as well is a public service and resource and does not endorse candidates or political parties. We have four candidates participating in tonight's forum. They are Hani Malik, Jamie Meyer, Ryan Hameter, and Kate Erickson. Laura Strobel, Richard Leach, and Elizabeth Sharland declined to participate in tonight's forum. Jen Calzada did not respond to our invitation. There are four positions to be filled in this election. Three of the positions are for full three-year terms. The fourth spot will be for one year. School board positions are not partisan. Per the school board website, and I'm quoting, "The three candidates with the higher vote total at the April 5, 2022 spring election will hold office for a three-year term 2022 to 2025. And the candidate with the fourth highest vote will hold office for a one-year term 2022 to 2023. The newly elected school board members will take office on April 25, 2022. Please become informed about your entire ballot and vote in this upcoming election." One way to learn more about your school board candidates is by going to vote411.org. This is a National League of Women Voters voter guide, and our local league will be participating this year with school board contest information. All candidates have been contacted by an Ozaki League member inviting them to provide information and respond to three questions regarding the upcoming election. We are waiting for candidates to respond to the questionnaire that was sent to them, and the information will be published on the vote411.org website no later than March 15. This is yet another way to become informed about your candidates. If you wish to learn more about all of these candidates, please visit vote411.org. Questions for this forum were solicited ahead of time from the public through announcements in the newspaper, on the League's website, and through word of mouth. Questions were submitted and were then sorted and combined into categories and themes by members of the League of Women Voters. Only questions relevant to this school board position were accepted. I would now like to introduce the participants of this evening's forum. I'll introduce them in the order that we determined before the forum using a regular number generator. Hani Malik will be giving her the first opening statement, then Kate Erickson, Jamie Meyer, then Elizabeth Sharland, Laura Strobel, Richard Leach, and then Ryan Hameter. This is the format that we're going to be using for tonight's forum. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to make an opening statement. Statements were solicited from the candidates not participating in tonight's forum. I will read those statements. Opening statements will be given in the order determined before we begin tonight. League member Louise Mallinger will be the timekeeper. The opening statements will be followed by responses to questions submitted by the public. We'll continue with questions for about 40 minutes, so it is unlikely that we'll get to all the submitted questions. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to questions. All candidates will respond to all questions. After the question period, candidates will have two minutes to summarize their positions on issues in a closing statement. The opinions expressed by the candidates are their own and are not sponsored or endorsed by the League of Women Voters or the Cedarburg Public Library. I will ask that candidates mute themselves when not speaking, and then remember to unmute when it's their turn. All these candidates have chosen to make the effort to run for elected office. As a consequence, they are subjecting themselves to the scrutiny of the voters. Whatever you may think of each candidate's position on issues, they deserve our respect for their willingness to serve in public office. Remarks must remain focused on questions. In an effort to provide the most information to the public, we will stay focused on the issues and avoid making comments about other candidates. We'll now begin with the introductory remarks. As mentioned earlier, the order was determined using a random number generator. Since Hani Malik won the draw, she will give the first opening statement, followed by Kate Erickson, and so on. I will be reading statements provided by the three non-participating candidates. At this point, I would like to remind all that the League of Women Voters of the United States is proud to be nonpartisan, neither supporting nor opposing candidates or political parties at any level of government, but always working on vital issues of concern to members in the public. At this time, we'll start with the opening statements. Hani, you have the first opening statement. Please remember to unmute yourself.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Hani Malik. Thank you so much to the Cedarburg Public Library and the League of Women Voters for putting on this event. Really appreciate that. Just to introduce myself, my family and I moved to Cedarburg in 1992. I'm proud to say that we've lived here for almost 30 years. We left for eight years to Peoria, Illinois, which I don't recommend for anyone to do. Hopefully, I'm not offending any Peorians out there. I'm proud to say that we have three wonderful children that we've raised in this community. They've gone on to receive fantastic public educations in Cedarburg and then on to UW institutions at Wisconsin and La Crosse, and I'm a staunch believer in the quality and the value of public education. I am the chief operating officer of a large locally owned company. I'm passionate about leading people, managing budgets, collaborating with internal and external partners, implementing new ideas and innovative problem-solving techniques on a daily basis. In addition to my business acumen, my early upbringing, coming from Egypt, actually immigrating with my parents, I believe gives me a unique perspective that's important during this critical time in our culture and our community. I'll do everything in my power to ensure that all children and families feel safe and loved in our school system. I'll bring transparency to the school board, open dialogue, compassion for students, honoring teachers and educators and administration, ensuring fiscal responsibility, and make sure that we're implementing the finest curriculum possible in a safe environment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Hani. Our next speaker for an opening statement will be Kate Erickson. Make sure you unmute, Kate. Thank you.
Thank you for inviting me to this event this evening. I very much appreciate it. My name is Kate Erickson. I am a parent of a fifth grader at Parkview Elementary School, and basically that makes me as invested as I can be in the school district. For a profession, I am a history professor at the Milwaukee Area Technical College. My areas of specialty are Native American History, Wisconsin Indian History, early American History, and State of Wisconsin History in general. I've been in Cedarburg for over a decade, living in southeastern Wisconsin. For about 20 years, I originally grew up in Shawano, Wisconsin, northern Wisconsin, and I am a proud member of the Oneida Nation. So along with a lot of cultural experiences and diversity that can be brought to the board, I also celebrate with my community a spirit of collaboration and a desire to work together. I really believe that the Cedarburg School Board needs to look towards the future. We need to make sure that our students are being actively prepared for the world that they're going to encounter, and I would like to see a lot more transparency and a lot more collaboration between the district as a whole and the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Our next speaker will be Jamie Meyer.
Well, thank you to the League of Women of Ozaki Voters as well as Cedarburg Public Library for having us today. I am a mother of three strong, active boys who attend our Cedarburg School District. They are the result of me wanting to run here in Cedarburg. My coming into motherhood was a very long road and struggle with infertility, and I share this because it was the long road that led me to want to the mom that I am today and to the reason that I want to be on the school board. I am an advocate, as I learned with having boys that were born four months early, weighing only 1 pound 10 ounces, the size of a sweet potato, that it was up to me as a mother to be the voice that helped provide the best support and services they needed. I learned quickly that being that voice for them, my boys were gifted with resources and more opportunity. I advocated for their services. I advocated for more support, and I advocated to make sure they were being set up for the good help and success they deserve. I am a strong communicator because of these boys. As I learned with having a child with a disability, that one needs to have a two-way communication. I have worked closely throughout my son's entire educational track with his early learning instructors, his physical therapists, his occupational therapists, as well as his special ed team and his teachers. It is important for me to be open and honest and know and understand his limits, his abilities, and his goals. And it is also where I've learned to be transparent and show that this looks, that how this looks and feels on a parent's side. I'm also a business owner because of these boys. I stepped into this business because
Thank you so much, Jamie. I'm sorry, but your time has unfortunately passed.
Okay.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Sharland, and I will be reading her statement.
Thank you for offering me the opportunity to provide for today's League of Women Voters forum. I'm a mother of three girls, a full-time IT project manager and consultant, and I'm passionate about our Cedarburg community. I'm running for school board to advocate for high academic achievement for every Cedarburg student and to promote an environment of kindness and respect for all. I'm a natural problem solver, and I'm ready to bring my leadership experience to stand up for our community's greatest resource, our children. I'll work to keep the Cedarburg School District the premier public district in the state while maintaining our small-town values that make Cedarburg a great place to raise a family. I have four key priorities. One, academic excellence with a focus on doing the basics of math, reading, science, and social studies extremely well. Two, maintaining our common sense back-to-normal COVID policies. Three, cultivating a culture of transparency and fiscal responsibility. And four, fiscal responsibility and being a good steward of tax dollars. I decided not to participate in today's forum to send a message that an impartial host should be selected for future forums, and because I think an in-person forum would be more conducive to good dialogue. I invite any undecided voter to check out my website, send me an email or schedule a phone call. I'd love to talk to you. And I'm sorry, but my time is now up, so we're going to move on to our next speaker, which is Laura Strobel. Again, I will be reading the statement that she provided us. Hi, my name is Laura Strobel, and I was appointed to the Cedarburg School Board in July. I would be honored to continue serving on the board. I have lived in Cedarburg for 28 years and have had six children graduate from CHS and two currently enrolled. I have been involved in numerous school-related volunteer roles, including a past PTO president and treasurer and past Booster Club treasurer and board member. I am also a small business owner with CPA experience. I believe academic achievement should be the focus of the board. Cedarburg Schools are recognized for being great, but there is always room for improvement. We must continue to build on the strong foundations of reading, writing, and math in our students' education. High educational standards serve to benefit all students. We must prepare our students for the future and open opportunities for success. Retaining our best and brightest teachers will help our students reach their full potential. Parental involvement is integral to success. Enhanced transparency allows for their engagement in decision-making and functions of CSD. I will continue to prioritize good stewardship of taxpayer dollars while working to maintain the school district's facilities. Finally, an environment of kindness and respect for all goes without saying. Just as each and every student is important, so is each and every vote. I ask for your vote on April 5. Thank you.
And now the opening statement for Richard Leach. Again, I will be reading the statement that he provided us. I would like to thank the League for the invitation to participate in tonight's forum. Unfortunately, I was unable to make any of the proposed dates work with my schedule. Tonight, while you are meeting the school board, while you are meeting, the school board is also meeting to interview with preliminary superintendent candidates. I am a retired Cedarburg Police Sergeant and have been involved in the Cedarburg community for over 35 years. I have previously served as a Grafton Village trustee, village president, and Ozaki County Board member. I have had the privilege to serve on the Cedarburg School Board for over 12 years. I am running to continue to serve the community that has done so much for my family over the years. In Cedarburg, we are fortunate to have quality schools that rank near the top in our state. To have such successful schools, we need to attract and retain quality educators. We also need quality facilities involved parents and children willing to learn. However, taxpayers bear the cost for our schools, and in today's economic climate, with the reduced school funding, many tough decisions lie ahead for our district. My grandfather always said, "If you're not part of the solution, you are part of the problem." With that in mind, I would like to give my time and experience to help shape the future of our schools. Whether you vote for me or any of my opponents, please take the time to vote in the general election on April 5. At this time, again, I would like to just remind everybody that the League is proud to be nonpartisan. We do not support or oppose candidates or political parties at any level of government, but always work on vital issues of concern to members in the public. Now, for the
Excuse me. We have one more opening statement.
You're right. I'm so sorry. You're absolutely correct. We do. Thank you so much. Ryan, I'm so sorry.
Not a problem.
I promise I won't make that mistake again.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Thanks to those watching online. Thanks to the League of Women Voters of Ozaki County and the Cedarburg Public Library for hosting us. I'm Ryan Hameter, and I look forward to the opportunity to field your questions. Here's a little bit about me. I'm a product of Strong Ozaki Public Schools and attended public college at UW-Madison. I have two kids currently enrolled in the Cedarburg School District. As a beneficiary of high-quality public schools, I believe everyone has the right to the same high-quality public education that I received. I'm a senior electrical engineer at We Energies, a career which involves discipline, judgment, reasoning, critical thinking, decision-making, collaboration, and communication. I believe a community is only as good as the effort you put into it, which is why I'm actively involved in many functions throughout the area. The Board Secretary of the Ozaki Nonprofit Center in Grafton, the chairman of the annual Holiday Light Show: Illuminate Ozaki that takes place in Cedarburg, I coach for the Cedarburg Little League, commissioner on the City of Cedarburg Public Works and Sewerage Board, and a regular volunteer for festivals of Cedarburg and Westlon PTO events. My campaign is based on four cornerstones: nonpartisanship, listening to all stakeholders, making pragmatic decisions in the best interests of our students, and restoring diplomacy, respects, trust, and transparency; academic excellence, preparing students for real-world success, including knowledge, especially STEM, and soft skills like empathy, critical thinking, and teamwork; addressing chronic teacher retention problems and attraction issues; and four, fiscal responsibility and being a good steward of tax dollars. I look forward to sharing more with you today.
Thank you. And again, my apologies. I promise I will try not to let that happen again. Now, for the questions coming from the community. Kate Erickson, you will be our first person to respond to this question. If elected, what do you feel is the most important issue to address as a new member of the school board?
I would say first and foremost, as a member of the school board, the first item that needs to be addressed is the retention of our staff. We have lost 27 teachers to resignations since January of 2021. If we want to look total at the number of staff we've lost, teachers and our paraprofessionals, we've lost almost 70 people since January of 2021. We can have a school board, but if we don't have teachers, we don't have a school district. So we need to look at what we can do to have pay be competitive with the districts around us. We also need to seriously look at the cultures the teachers are experiencing, because what I'm hearing from our teacher community is that they don't feel comfortable or necessarily safe in the Cedarburg School District, and that's completely unacceptable. They're our biggest asset. We need to support them in order to support our children.
Thank you, Kate. The next person to respond to the question is Jamie Meyer. Would you like me to repeat the question?
I think I've got it. Thanks. So I also agree with Kate. I think the first thing that needs to be tackled, other than the hiring of the superintendent and setting that into effect, would be retaining teachers and also make this a destination for teachers. We need to get back to the communication our teachers are looking for and the respect and two-way communication, the competitive compensation, using correct technology, the relationship with not only their principals, but with the administration and staff, I think is something that we need to help put back into, you know, back around with our teachers. So I think it's super important to address this issue and bring it, you know, make them feel heard and respected here with our board.
Thank you. Ryan, you have the next response to the question.
I agree with Kate and Jamie. I would have said teacher retention is a severe problem right now, but since that's been covered, I will talk about communication and listening. I believe public comment needs to be reinstated, Cedarburg School Board. It was removed for a long, a large part of this last year, and I believe it's important for a board to engage with the community, engage in two-way dialogue, actively listening to everybody involved in major decisions, get input from the community members, students, parents, teachers, and taxpayers. Even though those views may differ from those on the board, it's critically important for the success of a government to obtain input from its residents.
Thank you. Hani.
Yeah, similar to what's been said already, but I'll add a little bit too. I'm a big believer as an employer that when people leave a job, it's usually not among, not because of one thing. It's usually because they don't feel appreciated, they don't feel that they're being developed, they don't feel respected. And so I'd like to understand if that's what's going on in our community and our culture, the relationship between the school board, the administrator, administration, the superintendent, et cetera. So I would want to dig into that. But in addition to that, I would want to look at the curriculum. I want to make sure that we are empowering our teachers to teach. These are professionals who went to college for this very specific career, and I want to make sure that we're in trust, we're trusting them to assess and deliver curriculum the way they've been trained. And so I'd want to make sure that we don't just hang our hat on good test scores, but that we are delivering the finest curriculum possible to our community.
Thank you. For our next question, we'll start with Jamie Meyer. Jamie, what would you do to promote effective communication with the school community and the community at large?
So I think it's important, like Ryan mentioned, is to restore public comment at the school board monthly meetings. But I also think it'd be great to open up that communication and make sure there are small committees that are being available for people that feel they need to be heard and have concerns. I know it's important for our teachers to also have a stake at the table and, you know, input and agenda items that need to be addressed for our school. So I think it's important that our community is able to address and have have open dialogue, not only with the superintendent and their teachers, but with the school board.
Thank you. Ryan, what would you do to promote effective communication with the school community and the community at large?
Yeah, so I just heard that one in my last answer, as far as the community at large, restoring public comment, engaging, engaging community residents with the board directly. I will expand that answer to improving communication with teachers, community members interacting with their teachers, and teacher, restoring teacher interface meetings that used to take place regularly, monthly, between the school board, administrators, and teachers. All of this is effective communication that can be improved to improve the dynamics of the Cedarburg School Board.
Thank you. And Hani.
Similar. Communication is key to everything. I don't believe in having listening sessions or having just the public forum where people get to express themselves. I think a dialogue is important. So whatever that takes, focus groups, committees, in order to really get down into the details and be able to ask clarifying questions, because venting is, you know, one form of expressing yourself, but having someone truly understand and actively listen is really essential. So again, not just allowing the public to comment, but engaging with the public in some form or fashion. We are meeting with several groups as we campaign to understand, and I would want to continue that on once we are on the board.
Thank you. And our final response to this question, Kate.
My answer would be, like we've heard, open public comment needs to be fully restored. An open public comment also needs to be added to the school board committee meetings. The school board needs to resume the live streaming of all school board meetings, and they need to begin the live streaming of all school board committee meetings. One of the biggest issues we have is community members asking for items to be placed on the school board agenda. Unfortunately, that has been blocked at every turn. I would like to see all school board members have the ability to place items on the agenda as they see fit. I also believe that school board members should be holding regular community office hours where they can be reached face-to-face to answer community questions, whether it's from community members, teachers, parents, you name it, instead of just receiving short email responses of, you know, "Thank you for sharing your thoughts." We need to have true dialogue between the school board and the community.
Thank you. Alrighty. Question number three. The first person to respond will be Ryan Hameter. Describe how you would make a decision where there are multiple groups of constituents weighing in. Make sure you unmute. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. So yes, in every case, in every decision, there are always two sides to a pancake. No matter how flat you squish a pancake, you're going to end up with two sides. I deal with this regularly, both in my career and in my volunteer opportunities. You got coaching staff that has different personalities. You have project teams doing utility work with different personalities and input and and knowledges and experience levels. Same with my volunteering on various boards. Same with my volunteering on various boards. Everybody's input matters. I think the way boards and coaching staffs work most effectively is when they respect each other. When they communicate, when they emphasize transparency and their ideas, they welcome input. And I believe, um, everybody's input matters and. It really comes down to prioritizing what's most important and how we can meet in the middle and find consensus on contentious issues.
Thank you, Ryan. Hanny.
Yeah, the way you asked the question almost sounds like it's a contentious thing. I, I welcome it. I think it's essential to making decisions. I uh, believe strongly that um, wisdom comes from the counsel of many. And so I invite it. I, uh, it's how I do research. It's how I um, become more informed is to make sure that I am. Provided multiple points of view in order to form an opinion and make a decision. And so um, that's what I would do. I would, I would uh, continue to invite that. Allow for it, uh, make a, make sure the process um, um, makes room for it and make decisions based on. And again, not just that you make a decision beca- uh, ba- based on popularity, but it's when you receive all that input in a, in a, in a way that is healthy for everyone. Everyone feels heard and valued, then you can make an informed decision.
Thank you. Kate, you'll be next to respond.
So as a trained historian, I want all the information. I want all the data. I want to talk to everybody. I want to read everything. I want to know everything. Uh, because truly that's the only way that you can make informed decisions is by being informed. Um, you have to hear all sides of the story. You have to hear all the opinions and all of the ideas and, and largely. You know, how, how you handle the situation is going to, to be based off of what kind of goal you're trying to achieve. But ultimately, when you're listening to all these sides, being a school board member. The thing that should be in the back of your mind constantly is what's best for the kids. You know, that, that is our ultimate responsibility. So while you are gathering all of that data and all that information in the end. A lot of times you have to say, well, is this what's in the best interests of our students?
Thank you. Jamie Meyer.
So I also would approach it. I do this at a daily basis in my job too is to. Grab as much information as you can, but also to understand what our true vision and values are that we have as a school and as a board. So that we can align and make sure we are making the right decisions based off our vision. And um, where our values sit. So while I, you know, I welcome different viewpoints. I think you can learn. From everybody that shares, but I also think we have to make sure we are making a decision. Timely and also respectfully taking the time to do the research, relying on experts. Relying on those that chose this as a profession so that we understand their role and how this affects them. So weigh the pros and cons, but truly um, make it in the vision based on the vision and value that our school is based on.
Thank you. And I want to thank all the candidates because you're really doing a good job of um, staying with the time limit. So I appreciate that. All right, the person who will start with our next question is Hanny. Question number four, what can the school board do to attract and retain quality teachers, paraprofessionals? Aides, administrators and staff?
Well, it goes right along with the, the um, question that we just talked about. Uh, it starts with listening. Uh, we have to understand what's working and what's not working before we can do anything. I uh, haven't mentioned yet, but my middle daughter is a teacher. She's a ninth and tenth grade English teacher at Waniki High School and. And I'm very proud of her and she's a great source of information. But I would do exactly what we have always done in, in my business career. You meet with your constituents and those are parents, teachers, um, students at times, administrators. To understand what's working and what's not working. Find out why they're not staying in, in the area and then begin to develop a plan. To fix those gaps and draw people in. My priority is to retain the great teachers that we have. And so we don't have to cycle through bringing more on. So I hope we don't have to attract anybody because we get to retain all. And all the teachers that we've developed and, and, and they've developed with us. So that would be my uh, approach.
Thank you, Hanny. Kate Erickson.
So as an educator, you know, I, I have a u- unique perspective on this. So um, at M A T C, whenever we hire anyone on in the history department, which I'm a part of. I'm a part of those um, hiring situations. Um, and much like teachers in K through twelve, we have the same issues with, with pay and respect and culture. Uh, so really we need to be looking at what the districts around us are doing. What districts are our teachers and staff leaving for? You know, why are they leaving to those areas? And we really need to look at the culture, the climate. Um, and not just the pay, because a lot of times if you leave a job, it's not necessarily because of the pay. Sometimes it's because of your boss. I've left quite a few jobs where I was heartbroken to leave my coworkers. But not necessarily so heartbroken to leave my bosses. We really need to look at those things and be critical of them.
Thank you. Jamie Meyer.
Yeah, so I think a lot of good things have come up. I, we need to go back to understanding and respecting our teachers and showing them the respect that they deserve. I also think it's time that we look at some other, some benefits that our paras are missing. Our special education department is in dire need of not only paras, but more special ed teachers. And they are leaving at an alarming rate. And this is a population that needs consistency. They need those people they are helping and, and working with our teachers. So I do think we need. To listen to the teachers and provide that what's, what's happening, understand the culture and see how we can fix the culture. Do we need to, you know, bring in those to listen around other districts to know how to fix culture and what a good culture looks like? Maybe we just don't know what that is. And I would like us to invest in our teachers by providing. Um, those necessary tools that they're asking for.
Thank you. Ryan Hameter.
Yeah, I've discussed this with several teachers pro- personally, uh, to get to the bottom of what we can do. Because this is really a critical question and an important problem to solve. Um, several key points, improving the workplace culture. Remember our schools are a workplace for our teachers. We got to keep that in mind. Uh, that involves the same as any workplace, positive reinforcement, a positive atmos work, atmosphere for working. Enhancing communication is really key, and we've already talked about that tonight. Uh, restoring monthly meetings, making sure teachers and administrators are heard. And their input is taken into account. Uh, competitive compensation as far as adjacent districts and nearby districts. It doesn't sound like we're competitive right now. That's contributing to the loss of our uh, talent. And I agree with the point, community respecting and valuing our teachers. Let's treat them like they are the hard workers and the community members that they are.
Thank you, Ryan. Kate, you'll be the first to respond to question number five. A senior member of the Cedarburg High School Bridge Builders Leadership Team. Asked, how will you allow students to have a voice in this community and promote non-discrimination in our school?
What I really would like to see, if possible, is perhaps the creation of student liaison positions to the school board. So that students in the district actually have direct access to school board members to bring their concerns forward. Um, one of the issues we have in the community is in regards to um, acceptance of diversity. Uh, diversity racially, um. Idea of thought, how you identify. Um, unfortunately, the situation with the mural this past summer shows that we've got a lot of work to do in the Cedarburg School District. And we really do need to be listening to our students. We've had quite a few students actually speak out at school board meetings about the things that they're experiencing. And unfortunately, I haven't seen any action on meaningfully trying to fix those problems. Um, and some parents have had to result to state complaints and that's unacceptable.
Thank you. Jamie Meyer.
But I, I would like to go along on that. I think we need to have follow through. So I, I think our students deserve to be heard, but they also deserve to see the follow through of those complaints that they are making. I think there needs to be education on acceptance and diversity. And I feel, I, I love that idea, Kate, of a student liaison. I think. We need to have opportunities where our students are, are constantly engaging with our administration. And having that involvement of what's happening. It, in the classrooms as we are not there, we need to um. Be there for them to understand, but also have the education to share how to handle difficult situations. Because it's going to be throughout life as they move on to college or to the arm for, you know, outside of um. Of Cedarburg. So I do think we need to continue giving them the tools on how to uh, address these issues and concerns, but listen to them.
Thank you. Ryan Hameter.
I was gonna say school board interface meetings, uh, with the students as well. I think school board members should be approachable. I think school board members should visit these schools and these classrooms. Um, I'm not really sure how anybody can effectively serve the students or the student bodies without knowing what the students. Are doing, what thinking, uh, they should be heard. These are our residents too. These are the future generation. Um, and I think it's really important to get out there, uh, listen to their concerns, including in diversity, whatever observations they're making in school. And addressing those as uh, comprehensive development as part of our school district.
Thank you. Hanny Malik.
As I mentioned, I had three wonderful kids. They're soon to be twenty eight, twenty six and twenty three and recently shared with me their experiences in, in Cedarburg. It was, it was all wonderful for them, but they definitely noticed the things that were being said or allowed to be said. I just started.
Excuse me, I'm gonna let Hanny start again because I think we were still, you were still doing the, the timing from the previous speech.
I'm sorry.
That's quite all right.
That's okay.
All right, Hanny, would you start please again?
Sure, um. Uh, as I mentioned, my, my children, twenty eight, twenty six and twenty three, shared with me their, their experiences in school. And while it was good for them. Um, they didn't experience any kind of um, uh, racism or anything like that. Um, they saw it and, and witnessed it and they came back and they shared with um, with. Previous teachers and administrators and they wanted to talk and share that. And I would say the school board should do the same. They should talk to recent graduates. Because they're going to be more open, right? There, there's nothing for them to fear. Um, and they should be able to come back and learn from them what their experiences are. But there's no question, this is not just. Rule issue, this is societal issue. We all could benefit from being uh, made aware and more sensitive and have more empathy. And schools are no different. And so I'm a big believer that we have to help these young people understand. The ramifications of words and comments and hurtful things that happen so for them to be prepared when they. Go out in the real world and they are not going to get away with it.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on. Jamie Meyer, you'll be the first to respond to the next question. What will you do to improve relations between the district, the board and our LGBTQ? And B I P O C, that is black indigenous people of color students and their families?
So I would like to go back to the past couple of questions where truly engagement is where I think we need to start. And opening up that communication between all of these groups. I do feel it's important for them to be heard and based on what's happened this past year. Um, like someone mentioned with the mural, I think we need transparency to understand and help these. Uh, students in the, this community know that they have a place here. So I again, would open up. To communication as well as um, you know, having a. More understanding and education and being respectful of the differences that we have in this community. So I think, once again, listening.
Thank you. Ryan Hameter.
Uh, yes, um, Cedarburg is a community that embraces diversity and strives for excellence. These beliefs should uh, apply to our school district as well. As a board member, would reinstate public comment into board meetings and welcome input from all community members, including on, on diversity topics. Uh, I think we should have focus groups to identify areas where we can improve in this area. Create listening sessions to discuss and contribute ideas, uh, including addressing the mural issue. And I believe this approach with enhanced communication promotes inclusion by nature.
Thank you. Hanny Malik.
Well, again, we're gonna keep beating that drum called listening and engaging and understanding and having empathy. You can't do anything unless you have those um, qualities in your makeup and your desires. So you have to understand what's going on. Um, as I mentioned, uh, I immigrated here from Egypt. Um, I felt this thing of racism. My, my skin was much darker as a kid and, and, and I had fuzzy hair and was still kind of do and. And I was picked on and um, and it was tough. And uh, it's not a poor me thing. I'm just saying that's what I experienced. And I know what that feels like. So there's a, I, I have a heart for this topic. I want to make sure kids go to school every day and they feel safe and loved and um, have a great experience. And so that as a school board member, that would be the top priority for me.
Thank you. Kate Erickson.
Kind of pulling onto what Hanny said, you know. I'm a member of the United Nation. I experienced a lot of racism and discrimination growing up in Northern Wisconsin and. Uh, being cognizant of that, I am a member of the M A T C Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee. So part of what I do is making sure that our teachers, our staff and our administrators are trained. Um, in a lot of these issues so that they can see, you know, what, what are microaggressions, you know, what are things that are happening? In the school that you may not see, you know, based off of your own, your own viewpoint or your own lens. But really it's, it's the training and, and making it clear that just because you don't experience it and you don't see it, doesn't mean it isn't happening. And I think that's what can go a long way is letting people know, I see you. And I know there are issues and we are going to work to educate our school district and our community so that these things stop.
Thank you. Ryan Hameter, you're going to be the first one in this question. What is the role of the board in curriculum development? For example, human growth and development, CRT banned books.
So.
Right, oh, there you go.
The answer is that the school board sets the policy on these things and participates in the, in the review and development. So on curriculum, there's a, the curriculum development uh, board and. Specifically to H G D, I have, I have thoughts on that. I won't have time to share those, but the board is involved in those types of decisions. And book reviews, if a parent finds content uh, extreme violent, sexual in nature, they can submit. And the board participates in the reviews of those. And um. I guess as a board member, I'm, I'm interested and, and uh, I, I feel I can contribute pretty well to solid decision making for the best of our students in our district.
Thank you. Hanny Malik.
That's a long question. I'll try to solve here. Um, first of all, I'm a big believer in hiring the best and the brightest and getting out of the way. So hiring a superintendent who is going to run the school and hire the administrators and the teachers and the principals. That is where you start. The board advises, the board approves, the board will certainly interact. But the curriculum committee is, are the ones who are going to do the research and follow the recommendations and make the recommendation for the board to approve. As far as CRT and human growth and development and banned books, that's a big topic. Real quickly, I'm not a fan of banned books. That's a slippery slope. Um, CRT is a ridiculous uh, topic because it's not being taught or even entertained in, in K through twelve. But the bottom line is, if the question, if the questioner is really asking, how do I feel about sharing and teaching our kids what has happened in the history of our country? I'm a big believer in that. Sharing the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. It's not ideology. It's not indoctrination.
Thank you, Hanny. Kate Erickson.
Oh my gosh, that's a lot for a minute. Um, I'm a historian. I want all the books. I want them all. Obviously you have to be cognizant of what's appropriate for particular age groups, but banning books, it's a dangerous thing to start doing. CRT, I teach history. I don't even use it with my students. My undergrad students aren't prepared for it. It's not taught in K through twelve in Cedarburg and it shouldn't be. Um, when we're looking at human growth and development, we need to prepare our children for the world outside of school. Okay, we do them. Okay, we do them no favors by not equipping them with all of the necessary information that they need. And the human growth and development course we have now by and large is shame-based. You know, and that's, that's not appropriate. We don't want to have any type of, of shaming curriculum in our district. That's not what we should allow or we should stand for. And I'm a historian. I'm not going to go and write the math department's curriculum, and I'm not going to let them write my curriculum. So trust the experts.
Thank you. Jamie.
Yeah, so I think, you know, the board's responsibility is to got, to review policy, understand structure and, you know, hire the right superintendent. And the superintendent hires the right administration and staff. So for, for that, I think we need to rely on the experts, the curriculum, grade levels, and in their, each of their, their subjects that they do the research, they go out and find what is best for their students and what to teach, as well as what best tools to use to teach that. Regarding CRT, it's not an issue and Cedarburg never has been. It's not something that will be put on to be taught. Regarding banning books, I'm not a fan as well. They are, you know, all of that needs to be shared. But if there is a problem, it can definitely be brought to the attention of their teacher and the administration. And regarding the H G D, H G D program, that needs to be reevaluated as well. We have an outside program that is having to put that together for our students.
Thank you for your thoughts. I have more questions. Unfortunately, we have come to the point in the forum where each candidate will have two minutes to summarize their position. The closing statements will begin with Hanny Malick, who would have gone first had there been another question?
Very good. Okay, well, thank you again. It's been a, a great forum and hopefully our voters got to know us a little better and we'll make an informed decision or feel like they can make a more informed decision. I asked for your vote on April 5th. I entered into this campaign a couple of weeks ago or a couple of months ago, I should say. I've never run for office before. And the reason why is because I'm really passionate about what's going on. I feel qualified. I'm a transparent person. I'm an authentic person. I'm a bridge builder. I have natural leadership qualities. I'm an active listener. That's going to be something I beat over and over again. I'm highly committed to, to the school board and every job that I do. I'll work hard and diligent to make our district thrive and excel. I will bring, restore lowering the temperature in the room and making sure we all work well together for common good, and that is the kids, the kids, the kids, the kids. So there's no question, this is a critical time in our, in our community. And I honestly feel that I'm the right person at the right time and I'll work extremely hard to make that happen and, and help us grow our, our community and make our school board the best it can possibly be. Thank you very much for your time.
Kate Erickson, you have two minutes.
Thank you again for inviting me here today. My life experiences helped me bring a unique perspective to our board. When you're working a 12-hour swing shift at a paper mill, it's 2:00 AM and you're standing under a hot Yankee dryer spinning over your head and you've got a big, huge blender chopping up paper below you. You really learn quickly how to communicate, collaborate, and focus on safety. As a substitute special education aide, you learn a lot about how to work with people of different abilities and to do so in a compassionate way. When you work in a museum and in a historical society, you learn how to explain things to the public in clear and understandable terms. As a history professor, you learn how to write, vet, and implement curriculum properly, how to analyze teaching materials such as textbooks and software. You learn how to work with administrators and other teachers and support staff. I want to bring those skills to our community as a school board member. I'm gonna talk with, work with, collaborate with whomever I need to in order to ensure that our students are successful. I've been attending monthly school board meetings for around two years. I also attend school board committee meetings. I've livestreamed the monthly committee meetings since October of last year. The school district discontinued that. So no one attends more public school board meetings than I do. That's how committed I am to this district. I want Cedarburg to succeed. I want us to update and approve our district's curriculum in ways that save parents money and better prepare our students for life after high school. I want to fully involve all of our parents through improved communication, greater transparency, and collaboration. I hope that my answers helped gain your vote today. And if you feel that I or anyone else on this forum would be a great fit, please get out and vote April 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Jamie Meyer, you have two minutes.
Thank you. So I also asked for your vote on April 5th. I want to advocate for our community. These past 22 months have taught me many things, and one of them is that we are better together. We can do, we can have differing opinions, but first we need to listen to each other. My husband and I moved here 12 years ago because of the school district. Cedarburg has been known for their small town values and strong education. I want to continue that. I want to help guide and attract and retain the most qualified educators to support student success. I want a guaranteed experience for all students, for all students, and as regardless of needs or support issues. And I want to make sure there's transparency within the community, be an open listener in order to bring the community together. Again, I've been so engaged and involved in our community, being PTO president, being on the Cedarburg Junior Women's Club, running and really raising money tirelessly for women, seniors, and kids in our community. I am an active listener and communicator and truly want to make sure that we have an engaged board that listens to all sides and make sure that we are nonpartisan to all issues that are brought forth in our school district. And I guess I can go since I have so much time left to continue where I started off in my opening statement. But, you know, I started a business to, you know, learn how to navigate tough decisions, to, to coach others and also to be neutral, to understand different ideas and goals that my partners, as well as my teammates suggest. So being there and creating an open and safe space for all of our members was a goal for me as a business owner. So I appreciate your time. I look forward to working with those and collaborating and look for, you know, hopefully I can gain your vote for April 5th.
Thank you. Ryan Hameter, you have two minutes.
Again, thanks to those watching online and thanks to those hosting us here. I thank those participants here with us tonight who chose transparency, engagement, and communicating with the public they wish to serve. I think these qualifications are desirable and necessary for any board member who wants to restore community trust and ensure we maintain a premier school district. This school board election is a critical one. With four seats open, the community has the ability to decide the direction of our school district. I ask that you consider the following when you cast your vote on April 5th. Think about our outdated human growth and development curriculum, choosing the best. We know statistically that responsible H G D is significantly more effective at delaying sexual activity, reducing teen pregnancy, and avoiding STDs. Yet despite bipartisan support from the community for change, our district continues with archaic messaging that promotes shaming and fails to prepare students for safe and healthy relationships. Think about the educators we're losing to other districts or early retirement because our compensation structure is inferior, our culture isn't supportive, or our educators feel burned out without enough staff, paras, and resources. And possibly most importantly, think about removal of public comment from monthly school board meetings. Think about the statement made by that action against involvement, against community members, against your free speech. I believe it's time to elect members to the school board who will listen, actively listen, and engage in two-way dialogue. I believe good government strives for consensus and seeks input from all stakeholders when making important decisions. That includes those whose diff, whose views may differ from those on the board. If there's anything I've learned in this race so far, it's that Cedarburg is full of people who want our district to succeed. I believe strength can come from our differences. I recognize that my worldview is not the only worldview, and we can always learn something from the experiences of one another as long as we choose to engage with humility and respect. I'm a pragmatic problem solver interested in working for the best of the district and our students. I hope I bring your vote and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I want to thank each of the candidates for being with us this evening, for staying focused on the issues and maintaining your comments on the issues and staying positive. This concludes the forum. We hope that this forum has given you, the voters, the information that will help you cast an informed vote on April 5th for Cedarburg District School Board members. Again, we thank the candidates for giving us their time and their thoughts this evening. Thank you so much. Good evening.